Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Call the meeting to order at 7:01 PM. Okay, we'll start off with item number three, public comments. Is there any public comments? Ford, state your name and address for the record right into the microphone, please.
How you doing? Rick Manjoni, eighty-two Main Street, property on your own. As you know, the town put new sidewalks in, handicap ramp right across. One issue is that they brought the planter in front of the building, which I talked to Jim. It was supposed to be fixed about two weeks ago.
Jim Gallagher?
Yes, he was representative for construction, I guess, or town engineer.
Yep.
That's my planter, but also the sidewalks are cracked that when they did the handicap ramp, they cracked the sidewalk which belongs to the town, and Jim said he was going to have them fix them also.
Okay.
And the other one, it was a rumor saying there might not be parking overnight on the street. When I built that building and took out the permit, we need seven parking spaces, which...
Not on, not that I should be answering, but not on where you are.
Oh, they're not going to...
First, Columbus, not Main Street. Not Main Street.
They park on Main Street.
Not Main Street.
Okay.
Yeah, State Road, we can't.
That was it.
Okay, excellent.
Just wanted to let you know about the sidewalks.
I appreciate that. Rory, can you make a note file for Jim tomorrow, please? Is there any other public comments?
Nothing about you, Kurt, yeah. Just want to let everybody know that I was talking to Rory about it, he said bring it up so we could get some publicity in the paper, we could get some more help. I took over the Memorial Day Committee Parade. And when I met Mr. Singh, they made me the chairperson, fast. But we have some changes, and I just want to let everybody know, so maybe we could put something in the paper. It's going to be the second Tuesday, we moved the location to Town Hall again. I'm meeting with Bob Lang to go over how he runs the Christmas parade. Just found out today, too, for flyovers, they used, they stopped them, but now they're restating them because they use them as time targets. So when, you know, when people bomb stuff, they could, when they have to be somewhere like eleven o'clock, they have to be there. So now they're installing that back into the place, so we might be able to get a flyover this year. I talked to Mr. Stanek, he's going to be the emcee again, and we're going to keep the, we're going to keep it a little bit shorter because it gets warm up there. We'll make some improvements for your bandstand, and we're going to try to open it up more to the public. So they come to the meetings, and we're going to add some floats and some stuff and have some trophies. Just going to try to mix it up a little bit and enjoy the day. Tom's coming to the first meeting, Amy to discuss maybe a new parade route. So we're reaching out to everybody to try to get an understanding and try to make this successful again. Not that it wasn't, but just making it different.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. When's the first meeting, Alex? Was it last night?
No, it was, uh...
Or two weeks ago?
Yeah, yeah.
Or last Tuesday?
The next one, yes.
Yeah, it was last Tuesday. So it'll be the second Tuesday of each month. Okay, is there any other public comment? Any other public comment? Rich is smiling. Is there any other public comment? Okay, hearing no public comment, we'll close, public comment. Move on to item number four, approved minutes from the October fourth, two thousand sixteen, regular meeting. Motion by Al, second by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes five, zero, two, and no Karen and Stefan's abstentions. Okay, item five, first selectmen's report. The agreement with CARES has been finalized and signed off by both the volunteers and the town. They'll be working to get the animal rescue up and running in the next few weeks. Think this is a great thing that will really benefit the people of Seymour and the surrounding area. And just off that, you'll see in your packets, there is a letter that the town of Woodbridge received a steep grant for $400,000 that we applied for jointly with them to reinvest in the animal shelter to update that facility even more than it already was. Brian Lee and I are working with Bruce Baker on behalf of the church to finalize a draft agreement between the town and the church for the extra parking lot at the community center. Originally, we had hoped the project would be completed in October, but due to projected costs, we'll be going out to bid. Based on the recommendations from Don Smith, we'll put that bid out in the middle of December. We expect to have the work completed at some point in early spring. We're actually going to put in the bid documents a May first drop dead date that we want to have the work done by. Once the bids come back, I'll bring the final agreement to the board for approval as well as a bid award letter. So we'll take care of everything in one, one shot. As discussed, the final phase of roadwork started this week. This phase includes the crack sealing of roads as well as sidewalk repairs and repaving on First Street, DeForest, and Wakeley. We expect the work to take about two weeks or so to be completed. Rory's been in contact with the downtown merchants to provide them updates, and as things change, we'll provide updates to them so they're aware. As a reminder, the Strategic Planning Committee will be holding their community forum and discussion next Tuesday, October twenty-fifth at seven PM at the Land Trust Building. Selectman participation is expected and greatly appreciated. I can provide more details after the meeting. Recall, that's the email I sent out to everybody confirming the date a couple of weeks ago. Let's see, the town will be holding a public meeting next Thursday, October twenty-seventh, at seven PM at Town Hall to go over the upcoming bond issue. Town engineers will be on hand to discuss the projects, as well as our financial advisors from William Blair. We'll be here to review the costs associated with the bonds and the outlook of our debt service going forward. We'll be sending out press releases, social media, and everything else, but I ask that you, everybody pass that information out to their family and friends so we have a nice turnout and participation. Like to report that the town finished the two thousand sixteen fiscal year with an unaudited surplus of a little over 500,000. This surplus came from a higher-than-expected anticipation collection of taxes, as well as expenses coming in below budget. I've begun the fiscal year two thousand eighteen budget process, and will be making recommendations to this board and the Board of Finance in January as to the best course of action for this surplus money. I expect to have my budget completed by the middle of November. Finally, tomorrow, I expect to receive a shipment of twenty pink ninety-six gallon toters from Winters Brothers. The town will be selling these on a first-come, first-served basis, and all profits will go directly to Seymour Pink. I expect these will go very quickly, so if you have any interest, please let me know right away. Nicole's already claimed two. If demand is high enough, there will be, we have the ability to order more. I want to personally thank Ryan Bingham of Winters Brothers for his help in securing these toters for us. The toters will be used for recycling, not for garbage. So they will be lined up down here, starting tomorrow, Rory doesn't know that, so he's not going to be happy about it, in stacks, in five stacks of four. So if anyone is interested, the toters are going to sell for $125 each. That'll be about a $55 profit per toter that will go to Seymour Pink. So we'll be able to raise them about $1,000 or so with this order. They'll be in here. What? What's wrong, Alex? Toters will be right here. They'll be gone in two or three days, so. Okay. So again, if you're interested, let me know.
I don't know if I can ask a question.
Sure.
On the news the other night, they were talking about how they're going to shut down their dog pound because it's full.
Mm-hmm.
And they're looking for other towns to take dogs.
Mm-hmm.
Is that something that we approve?
That would be up to Woodbridge, if they wanted to take more dogs in. I think they would do that in consultation with us and Bethany, to be quite honest. But I don't know if they would, I think it would depend on the type of dog, to be quite honest.
Yeah, they didn't say on the news what type of dog. They just said their dog facility is full.
Unfortunately, it's probably a lot of pit bulls, and nobody wants to take pit bulls, that's the problem. If it was a bunch of fluffy poodles, I think everybody would be lined up to take them. But unfortunately, it's generally not the case.
Okay.
So. Okay, all right, so with that, I'll close the first selectmen's report. Move on to item number six, excuse me, discussion, take possible action regarding warning of bid for the Remen Street Reconstruction Project. We started this process back in nineteen eighty-four, it seems. So in your packet, you all have a letter from DeCarlo and Dahl. Says, Dear Selectman Miller, DeCarlo and Dahl has reviewed the bids for the Remen Street Reconstruction and Drainage Improvement State Project Number one twenty-four dash one sixty-nine. As a result of our review, we have found H.I. Stone and Sons Incorporated to be the lowest responsible bidder, and are hereby recommending that H.I. Stone and Sons Incorporated be selected for this project. Please feel free to contact us should you have any questions. Very truly yours, DeCarlo and Dahl Incorporated, and it's signed by its president, Doron Dagan. Okay, so with that, I will entertain a motion that the Remen Street Reconstruction and Drainage Improvement State Project Number one twenty-four dash one sixty-nine be awarded to H.I. Stone and Sons Incorporated as recommended by DeCarlo and Dahl. Motion by Len, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion? Okay, just under discussion, attached are all the summary sheets for all the bids. So that's what all those spreadsheets are. Assuming the board approves this, then we need to send paperwork on to the state tomorrow and the next day to get that moving along. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes seven, zero. Next item on the agenda, number seven, discussion, take possible action regarding property at one thirty-nine Maple Street, Mr. Betlera. My mother thanks you for doing that.
It's the least I could do. One thirty-nine Maple Street is a property located in a residential area. It was taken back by the town of Seymour as a result of a tax sale initiated by the tax collector. The town has no use for this particular property, and would like to go out to, like to advertise it for a sale by way of a sealed bid process. I would recommend doing that, subject to any sale, let me go over the sale process. There are two state statutes that apply, eight dash twenty-four. If, in fact, there is a successful bidder, the property, because it is now municipal property, may have to be referred to the Planning and Zoning Commission for an eight twenty-four report. And secondly, there's a Connecticut General Statute seven dash one sixty-three E, which may apply. And seven dash one sixty-three E requires that the property be posted with a sign, and that there be two public notices published in a newspaper of general circulation prior to the actual sale being approved, and that there be a public hearing. So it is somewhat of a, there are some exceptions that may apply here, depending upon the dollar volume on the bids. This particular piece of property, I am told by Tony Caserta, is point one four acres. It is accessible by a ten-foot right-of-way to Maple Street over property known as one thirty-seven Maple Street. The town intends to sell it as is, and there's a mobile home located on the property. So with that, I would, at the request of Mr. Caserta, the Tax Office for Selectmen and others, ask that the board make a, pass a motion authorizing the town to solicit sealed bids for the purpose of selling this in accordance with state law.
Okay. Any questions, Rich? Okay, then, as recommended by Town Council, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the town of Seymour to select sealed bids for the property known as one thirty-nine Maple Street in accordance with state law. A motion by Karen, second by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes seven, zero. Thank you, Rich. Item number eight, discussion, take possible action regarding special events permit. One of the issues that we've had over the last, I guess, six months to a year. We have a lot of things that have been going on, and there's been some overlap with some of these events, particularly down at the community center where people just weren't aware of different things going on. So Rory did the undertaking of creating a special events permit. He worked with Tom, Amy, who's here, and Mary McNallys, and a few other people to get this organized and up and running. So anytime that there is any type of special event that'll happen in the town of Seymour going forward, this permit will need to be filled out, and it'll be need to be worked through the proper channels to make sure that emergency management is aware, and fire and police, and everyone else. So with that, Rory or Tom, I'm not sure who wants to speak, if you want to give a quick little review of it.
Tom, Amy, fifty, Royal Lane, Emergency Management Director. We birthed this permit process because we've had a few speed bumps. And probably the Carnival was the one that was distraught or broke the camel's back to say, look, we have to all get on the same page together, because different organizations didn't come before us. Our process starts all year long. I'm blessed to have Timmy Willis and Paul Sikowski as a trifactor. We handle most of these items. But again, have a permit sign-off process. Everybody comes to you folks with some great ideas for the community, and you say, yeah, go, go, go. Now it's us to us to put it together to see how we can fit it in the community, that everybody can live together and it works. So in order to get those check-offs, we internally have our own, now we have bigger check-off. Somebody signs off on parks for a special event, okay, then it goes through our, everybody gets to see it. Well, wait a minute, we get to look at it, know we need the X, Y, and Z. We go to the next person who does it, and everybody goes down the process, and, okay, how many meetings do we need? What's missing? And we try to make sure we put it together so that the town is representative and protected, but the organization applying for this is treated fairly and embraced in trying to have this event in our community. And that's basically how we finally stepped up and came up with this. And of course Rory's skills.
Al.
Tom, just curious, when you say special event, I see that there are event types on the form. But is there any particular definition for that? Is it over X amount of dollars, expectations of having more than X amount of people at an event? How do you...
We look at what type, okay? A touch of truck comes in, those generally draw three hundred, maybe four hundred people. But we have to, we see then, what can a community provide with a touch truck? And we go to those organizations and bring it forward. Example, football game, you know a football game does a couple thousand people, all right? So their plan automatically, because you have an EMS coverage, you have a police presence. So we know that those are known factors. Pumpkin Festival, Founder's Day, Smoke in the Valley, Five K, Seymour Pink, and we were doing Diaper Dash. We know and anticipate the amounts of people coming in, so we know how much we have to ramp up public safety to supply support services, or what's necessary to affect the community. So again, know, we look, and when we get it in, we look at it, evaluate it, we sit down with those organizations proposing it, and we get a better feel if we don't have an idea of it.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that folks knew when they had to apply for this and when maybe they didn't have to, so they're not wasting your time maybe reviewing an application that is not relevant. That's it. That's the deal of work.
Well, I think anytime they ask the board, different things like that, they'll need to come to us or any of the larger events that's going to require town services or town fields, buildings, whatnot. I think they should be filling out this form, if nothing else, so we can keep track and make sure that everyone is aware of what's going on and there's no, no issues. Right. But now, as, you know, Seymour Soccer does a wine event, wine tasting event at the Land Trust, we obviously don't need to know that. But if it were to be held at the community center as an example, then we would need to know to make sure we're not overscheduling.
That would be a town-wide thing, per se, and you have to cap it.
Correct, that would be correct, that's a private thing, right. Len?
Questions? What's the process? For example, if I want to have a, I'll just use a food drive for hurricane victims, just out of the blue. What would be the process actually go, would I go to ambulance department first, would I go to Kurt, would I continue?
You'd fill out the information, and then we'd have it, Rory?
Okay.
Is he back with Buckland's office?
Would you generally do the larger events that have to come to you for, for, you know, the lower...
Okay.
Or internal, we're not trying to...
Okay, so people don't have to fill out the application, per se, you guys start filling it out for them?
It's going to be on them to make sure that it gets all the sign-ons, but it's supposed to be able to ensure that everyone needs to take that...
I like the idea, I mean, I'm just, just a couple more questions by me. Sorry. I do see it says, form must be submitted sixty days ahead of the event. Do we have exceptions for that? To use my example, you know, food drive for hurricane victims, if, you know, something happened like what just happened in Haiti, would we be able to waive that?
I'm sure we can look at the exceptions, too.
Okay.
Again, going from nothing to something.
Sure. And what do we do if we have multiple events asking for the same day? How do we, how do we choose?
Yeah.
But it's going to happen, it's, it could...
With the fire in front of it, maybe there was set that, you know, which posed a problem, the girls' club.
Right.
Just a recommendation.
Well, plus two, if somebody shows up at the last minute and says, we want to do X, Y, and Z, you know, in three days, town can just say no?
Just a recommendation, I would put, just instructions, you can website, something like this, and then we'll process it. It's a good idea, thank you.
I just want to ask that, so, you know, they want to do the Five K, right? They're going to go to the first selectman, the first selectman's office, or the police department, or the Urban Management Director is going to give them this form? Whomever they're going to go to, because they're going to get this form.
They're going to get that form, all right? And like, Five K's a simple thing. Mrs. Deming comes before you folks, that, Mrs. Deming, at the same time contacts me, and at the same time Deputy Chief Sikowski, and we all start working right away onto the process. Again, it's just a sign-off process, it's a paper trail we now have for everything. And it's a standard, it's a work standard.
I think, too, regardless of who the person starts with, it still has to be signed off by everybody on this page, so everyone will be aware and understanding what's going on. Any other questions for Tom or Rory? No, everybody's good? Okay, there's no other questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes seven, zero. Thank you very much, guys. Item number eight, appointments, we have no appointments this evening? I'm sorry, nine? Item number ten, tax refunds and abatements, Nicole.
The following overpayment of tax payment in total of, excuse me, $3,040.59 needs to be approved for refund in accordance with provisions of Section twelve dash one two nine of the Connecticut General Statutes. Dated at Seymour, the seventeenth day of October, two thousand sixteen. Susan Boland, Tax Office.
Thank you, Nicole. Just want to make sure, a little careful. Okay, so everybody, this point, I'll entertain a motion to accept the tax collector's October seventeen, two thousand sixteen, report as presented. Motion by Anne Marie, second by Nicole, it's under discussion, everybody take a look. Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes seven, zero. Next item on the agenda, item number eleven, transfers, we have no transfers. Item number twelve, correspondence. Correspondence, we have check registers. We have a letter from Secretary Benjamin Barnes of OPM discussing the steep grant that was awarded to the town of Woodbridge and jointly with Seymour and Bethany for the animal shelter. There is an invitation to the VFW Post twelve, zero, eighty-four for their thirty-third Annual Veterans Day Candlelight Vigil to be held at Broad Street Park. You can see the date and time there. Hopefully we'll see everyone there. There is a legal opinion that the Board of Police Commissioners asked to clarify for parking regulations for disabled citizens. And then there's also a letter that I sent to Real Term with regards to our decision at the last Board of Selectmen meeting about moving forward with the process for the LED streetlights, and we have a meeting set up, and they will be in tomorrow. So we will work through that, and we'll provide updates as we go along. So that concludes our correspondence. So with that, we'll move back to public comments. Is there any additional public comments? Is there any additional public comments? Ask one last time, any additional public comments? Hearing none, move to item number fourteen, selectmen's public comment. Stefan.
Thanks. As far as I know, the Seymour PD roof was replaced in two thousand and ten. What has gone wrong with it now that we need to fix it again?
Off the top of my head, I'm not sure, I'd have to look at the report. There's some issue with leakage, I don't believe it was the full roof, though, in two thousand and ten. Alex is on the board. Alex, do you remember off the top of your head?
Yeah, they repaired some of the part of the backside of the roof, or the ice damming, the damming part of the roof on the old side, or the roof is probably, we're going to be ready to register, but that would be repaired.
Do you think any of this is something that we could pursue? No? All right, it just seems like we do a lot of work on that roof.
The whole was quite a little, we were up in, I remember the door, it was related, two years, and then the backside, it was, they tried to do it in a different way, but it was...
All right. And I know that next year, we're not going to be doing the whole roof, is that correct?
No.
Just going to be doing...
Yeah, of course, yep.
All right, thanks.
Sit up? Okay, Karen?
I just have a couple of things. First of all, I want to compliment the people who decorated downtown. I thought it looked awesome.
Culture and arts.
The pumpkin, the, the scarepost?
Mm-hmm, yep.
I just thought they, they did an awesome job. They were thoughtful, creative, I just thought it was awesome.
They did a nice job.
I really did.
Their hope is to expand next year as well.
Oh, I hope so. That would be great. And the only other thing I want to say, and I know I'm beating a dead horse, everybody, but when Fred and I came down the hill tonight, we were facing the park, the gazebo, and a little girl ran out in front of us. We really need to get a crosswalk of some kind there.
The crosswalk, if you remember, will come when we do the curb cut. And the curb cut will be put in with this round of steep grant sidewalk repair that's being done. The state has it scheduled, but they have it scheduled for two thousand and twenty-one. They won't put in the proper crosswalk until we put in the handicap ramp, so.
I understand that, but this little girl, I'm going to guess she was twelve years old, herself. She ran out right, I wasn't driving, Fred was driving. She ran out right in front of us.
Well, I'm not sure a crosswalk would help that, to be honest. I mean, there's some different things you can do with signalization with the lights and some things that Rory and I have been looking at. But again, that's, that's a state road, so we need to get their permission to do that. And changing those signals is very expensive. So, you know, if you do it there, it's hard to make an argument why you wouldn't do it in other places that have similar concerns.
I understand that, but that's a very, very, very busy road.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And it goes over to the Boys and Girls Club.
Well, again, that's why putting the curb cut in and moving the crosswalk back, I guess, towards the bridge will give people more time, as opposed to having the crosswalk being right on the corner where it is now. So that will make things a little bit better.
Okay, I'm just...
No, no, understood, understood. But again, we, you know, the... But again, we, you know, the steep grant came in, we tried to program that curb cut in with the Main Street Investment Fund Grant. We weren't able to do that, but we can with the steep grant. Jim Gallagher is doing that. He's aware of it, and he's on top of it. I've already reached out to the folks at DOT, so they're aware. They said, "As soon as the curb cut is done, call us, and we'll come, and we'll put the crosswalk in right away." All right, Nicole.
I only have one thing. I just, sorry. The Public Works Department, again, we've discussed this many times. I think our new Public Works Director, Tony DiPrimo, is doing an excellent job, and all the workers at Public Works. I think our town looks great. It hasn't in quite some time, and I'm just commending him and the entire staff of Public Works that they're doing an excellent job. Keep up the good work.
You probably haven't noticed today, but Public Works painted Franklin Street, they made the yellow double lines blue for the police department. They're going to do Wakely Street green for Seymour Ambulants, and they're going to do DeForest Street red for Citizens Engines. So we're going to, I guess, express our appreciation for our emergency services people and what they do. Unfortunately, Wakely and DeForest are being ripped up, so we won't be able to put those down until next week or so. Red, the red is there? Oh, okay, so we're going to do the red twice then. That's, that's excellent. So, just a side note for that. All right, Al.
I also want to just thank the Department of Public Works for helping us out at Gary Park. We've been looking to do some renovations there and repairs for quite a while, and they were able to get up there and do that in this prime time of year to seed and repair. And something that we've been planning on doing for a while, and we'll probably reseed it again next fall. So I wanted to make sure I thanked Mr. DiPrimo and Bob Koskowsky Jr. in particular for spearheading that, making sure that got done. Thank you to them.
Thank you, Al. Ann Marie?
Oh, where to begin? First of all, Stefan wasn't at the last meeting, but I wanted to thank him for putting on the Meet Your First Responders Emergency Management, him and Tom Amy. That was a great presentation, even though we only had a few citizens show up. It was nicely done. Great presentation by the police department. Didn't realize they offered so much and did so much for our community. It was great to see. Second of all, I'd like to congratulate the Seymour Pop Warner Cheerleaders, both divisions, P.E.s and J.P.s, for bringing home the state titles from Massachusetts, and they got the escort from the police department. The recycling tote is going to be a great fundraiser, I think, for Seymour Pink. I know that I will be taking one for that. Chris just doesn't know it yet. It's a great idea about doing Franklin Street for the police department, the blue, and over by the ambulance committee, and DeForest for citizens. But let's not forget about Botford Road for the Great Hill Fire Department either, if that's possible. Can't play changes.
I love that. Sure. We can certainly do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have nothing additional.
Wow.
I know you're excited.
Wow.
That's first.
Wow. Well, just, just on a personal, again, I want to thank Len and Al and Stefan for helping push the car. Actually, letters went out today. Who?
You did not.
I most certainly pushed. I was the only one that got hurt. See, I still have a scar. Cut my hand on the glass. So, but letters went out today to all of our fundraisers, or all the folks that made donations. Rory put together a nice little thing with pictures and everything, just to thank them for all that they did. Total, we're a little over $14,500, which you guys all know, after expenses and everything. So, we, Alex, who comes up with these ridiculous ideas, and I have started working on next year already, so I recommend you boys get into good shape, because we're going to need it. So, yeah, I still don't even know how we're pulling this one off. I don't know how we were going to do, how we were going to do the car, let alone this one, so. Rich?
I have nothing.
Rory, we miss anything? With that.
I'll make motion, Joe.
Motion by Ann Marie, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes seven-zero. Mark the meeting closed at 7:36 PM.